All right, well, good afternoon. Today is March already, March 1st, 2021. And our three o'clock early session. We are glad that you have joined us, those of you who are with us today and those of you watching by whatever we do through technology, I'm glad you're here. It's the tradition of this board and boards all across the country. We begin with a couple of things. We're going to have our Pledge of Allegiance. We're also going to have what's called solemnizing prayer. Our chaplain, Michael Taylor, will come forward and do that for us. This prayer is for the commissioners. It's not for you. We seek wisdom in lots of places and certainly asking for wisdom as we begin these meetings is important to us. And so we'll ask the chaplain to come forward. Commissioners, if you're joining, we'll get started.
Commissioners, thank you, Chris, for being here today. Thank you for what you do. That's a prayer. What we can do today, and we thank you for this meeting today. We thank for our county commissioners and the work they do while we're down. The dedication they have down. This Rowan County that we live in, in the way we pray you a blessing today, given the knowledge they do today, ever since this meeting today. We ask this prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in this nation. In your wisdom, in your duty, justice, law.
Chaplain Taylor, as always, thank you. Hope you know how much we appreciate you being here with us. Got a couple of additions. I'm sure I'm going to lose or miss one. Commissioner, you received another good email from Scott Shelton from PDC. He wants to add an item, Project ACDC. You want to take a guess what that is? Project ACDC, he added his item in. We're just adding a public hearing for our next meeting. That'll be consent item in. Also, we've got under, I'm just going to put under item two, we've got a proclamation. Also going to add an airport resolution on there that I forwarded to you guys. And then probably just mention our water system issue under item two as well. So the airport resolution will be 2B, and then just an announcement under 2C. Mr. Manager, is there anything else? Anyone have anything else to add or take away? All right, then, motion to approve the agenda is amended.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved February 15, 2021 minutes.
Seven.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then the agenda for consent agenda has been amended. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Has amended.
Has amended, yeah.
Seven.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Special recognition, we have a proclamation. This month is the annual March for Meals on Wheels Month. I think we have our Meals on Wheels staff here in direct support, and so we're honored to have you here with us. So we're going to make a presentation, and commissioners, if you'll just meet me up front, we'll...
Tom Robinson, our president, and we have for each of you a little...
Oh, excellent. Oh, isn't that nice? Thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, they are...
Thank you very much.
Well, we have a proclamation that we'd like to provide. Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. Whereas Meals on Wheels America established the March for Meals Campaign in March 2002 to recognize the historic month, the importance of the Older Americans Act nutrition programs, both congregate and home-delivered, and raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. Whereas the 2021 observance of March for Meals celebrates 19 years of providing an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas Meals on Wheels Rowan County, North Carolina, has served our community admirably for 45 years. And whereas volunteers for Meals on Wheels Rowan are the backbone of the program, and they not only deliver nutritious meals to homebound seniors and disabled citizens who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also caring concern and attention to their welfare. Whereas Meals on Wheels provides nutritious meals to seniors and disabled citizens throughout Rowan County to help them maintain their health and independence, thereby preventing unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and premature institutionalization. Whereas Meals on Wheels provides a powerful opportunity for social connection for hundreds of seniors in Rowan County to help combat the negative health effects and economic consequences of loneliness and isolation. Whereas Meals on Wheels Rowan and its dedicated volunteers deserve recognition for the heroic contributions and essential services they have provided amid the COVID-19 pandemic and will continue to provide to seniors and disabled citizens in Rowan County long after the pandemic is over. Now therefore, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners proclaims March 21st as the 19th Annual March for Meals Month, and urges every citizen to take this month to honor our Meals on Wheels programs, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of and involvement in the National 2021 March for Meals can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America. This first day of March of the year 2021. So I'd like to present this to Meals on Wheels with our sincere...
Thank you.
I think everybody knows someone who is either receiving or delivering, and most of us know both. And without what you do, this would be, for a lot of folks, a lonely community because of the isolation that they're receiving. So we use the term often, people doing God's work, and this truly is. It's a wonderful thing that y'all are doing, and we certainly appreciate the effort that you put in and how you represent us as our community as you go out and serve others.
Appreciate it. I'm so glad, and a couple times you touched on isolation, because generally people think about food. Right now, even more than normal, social isolation is a killer. And we think that with our volunteers, we're able to help that. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the commissioners for your support in the past and helping us get where we are. It's a really important time for us to be able to thank about 1,000 volunteers in our county that helped us provide almost 300 meals every day of the week. And, you know, so it's a big deal. This helps kick off the month, and during the month, you'll see some of you are going to deliver meals, and other people that are partners with us for the rest of, during the month, will be delivering and seeing things firsthand. So thanks for all that you all do for us and for our community. Thank you.
All right, appreciate it. Commissioner Pierce reminded me that we need to vote on that resolution, so we have a motion, a second?
Seven.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Did we lose Jim again? Remove. And I just, let's see, I wanted to offer, we do a lot of stuff on consent, but then there's a lot of things that the community is doing already or working on doing that is good for the community here. There's some folks in Rowan County, including in our school system, that are working on aviation grant to begin aviation STEM classes through our CTE program at Rowan Salisbury Schools. Holly Corr is doing a great job on our CTE program over there. And so because we have such a vibrant airport, it's an important part of this community, they thought that would fit in. And so man, what an opportunity for our high school kids to take to get involved in aviation, whether it be becoming a pilot or aircraft maintenance. So I'd like to offer this resolution. Whereas Rowan County believes that aviation is an important contributor to our national, state, and local economies. Whereas in the very near future, the aviation industry will experience a significant shortage of pilots and aviation maintenance professionals. Whereas the aviation industry provides wonderful opportunities for employment, pays good wages and benefits, offers its employees a significant opportunity for professional personal development. Whereas Rowan County's economy and citizens benefit greatly from the presence of Mid-Carolina Regional Airport, which contributed $147.97 million to Rowan County's economy in 2019, supports 850 jobs, generated $43.24 million in personal income, and $5.15 million in state and local taxes. Whereas Rowan Salisbury School System's career and technical education programming offers training to our students in high-demand employment fields to help provide necessary to find relevant competitive job opportunities after graduation. And whereas Rowan County Commissioners fully support Rowan Salisbury School System leadership as they work to bring aviation STEM training to our CTE programming, therefore now being resolved that Rowan County Board of Commissioners does fully support applying for an aviation grant to the federal aviation administration to help bring aviation STEM training to the students of the Salisbury School System this first day of March 2021. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Wonderful. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Holly, thank you for your work there, and Jamie out of the airport and our airport director have been real involved in that. So we'll be looking forward to good news on that grant. Last thing, just wanted to, so we can get a little press out there for this. A lot of you have heard about the issues going out down Bringle Ferry Road in Dukeville with water issues, and we're doing water testing out there. And so these water test kits were delivered to the house. We're striving for 100% help on this. We need folks to get their, to open these up, to follow the instructions, send these water samples in so we can know what's going on out there with that water and know the extent to which some of those homes have lead and copper in their private systems. And so we need to know how to treat that. I bring this up today, I saw some friends at lunch yesterday, and the wife told me that they got this, but they thought it was for maybe a private company who was wanting to sell them a water purification system. So she just threw it out, and that's understandable. So we just want to get this in the record for folks. Please, 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 if you've received this and thrown it out, let us know, we'll get another one sent out to you. If you've not thrown it out and you still have it, please do your best to get this taken care of, because we genuinely want to make sure that the health, well-being of our citizens out in Dukeville is taken care of. Thank you. Anyone for public comment? No. All right, we'll move on then to item number four. Erin.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a guest that's joined us remotely that indicates they'd like to speak for public comment.
Okay, perfect. Just state your name and address, and then...
Hi, I'm Kia Whittlesey, and I'm here representing Community Fusion Coalition, and I have a letter to read to the commissioners. We are the Community Fusion Coalition, a group of local grassroots organizations recognizing social justice issues in the city and the county. We attend school board, county commission, and city council meetings, and monitor diversity and racial equality on our boards and commissions. Often the people handpicked for boards and commissions are chosen because they have similar views to the most influential members of those committees. This is human nature. We tend to gravitate toward others who think like us, but it doesn't create an effective committee. We all know that many different perspectives make our vision clearer. Without a diversity of views, our opinions become whitewashed and represent the interest of a few rather than the common good of the majority. Decisions made by the county and the city are guided by the recommendations of these boards and commissions. Yet can we be sure that every social and economic group is fairly represented in its membership? Can they fully understand and connect with the challenges facing people of color, women, low-wage workers, LGBTQ people, immigrants, and other historically underrepresented people, whether in daily life, workplaces, or interactions with local government entities? All of us want Salisbury and Rowan County to be more than mediocre. All of us desire to live in a vibrant community where everyone can thrive. So we ask you to put more people of color on boards such as the Economic Development Commission, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, Salisbury Community Development Corporation, Fair Housing Committee, and the Public Works Committee, which we know is not a commission, but as a committee, it accesses and distributes city resources. We urge you to invite and select people who will broaden our view and awareness of the greater community and contribute. We urge you to rotate the memberships of these organizations, because anyone seated on any of these bodies for more than 10 years should move on so that others may serve. We believe our submitted suggestions will move us closer to a more vibrant economy and a representation that is reflective of the innovation found in our diverse community. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, the first meeting of each month, we do board appointments. We received this letter today, and so this is a good opportunity for Kia to understand how the county boards work. Currently, we're talking your language right now. This is good news, Kia. We have 40 openings on Rowan County boards. And so if we'd like to get folks involved on local boards, then now is the time. And so really, the way the process works is if you'll go to Rowan County's website, how many boards do we have, Carolyn? So we have 72 boards. Currently, like I said, we have 40 openings, so there's lots and lots and lots of opportunities. So the way it works is you go onto the website, you can look up boards and commissions, is that what it's listed under? And then there, it has a description of the boards there, and so you find one, or you can do two, I think, you can do two boards that you're interested in, and you fill out an application. Now, if I was someone in the general public that wanted to apply for a board position, I would probably try to go above and beyond just filling out an application. When I filled out applications in the past before I was a commissioner, I would pick up the phone and I would lobby a couple of commissioners and say, hey, I'm really interested in this. I want to stand out above the others. Here's my qualifications. Here's my experience. Here's why I think it would be a great fit for this board. And so you tend to then stand out in commissioners' minds, because a lot of times we get a slew of applications for a position, and we may not know who these folks are. So that's a good opportunity. Again, 40 openings right now, it's a really good time to put into effect the things that you talked about, and we look forward to getting a lot of these applications filled. Every first Monday of the month, we talk about these board appointments, and every Monday, the first Monday of the month, we talk about how many openings we have, and we really beg for people to join us. So we would extend that invitation to the community still. It's a great opportunity to get involved in local government and see how government works and to have an influence in the way things happen. Some of the positions that were mentioned in that, for instance, the MPO, the MPO is made up of elected officials of all the municipalities, so we don't necessarily appoint MPO folks. So there's some of those, and we don't have any say over, but a lot of them we do. So thank you for joining us, thank you for your email to us. And so let's just come together and see if we can fill these 40 positions that are immediately, immediately available. And that'll be a good thing for everybody. So thank you for your time. All right, so Erin Poplin, we'll go ahead and move on to agenda item number four. While you're getting ready, I've got a speech I'm required to read by law. The hearing for consideration of CUP 01-21 is now in session will focus on applications submitted by Tammy Baucham to construct a residential storage facility on tax parcel 644104 located in Pleasant Cove. If you feel that a member of the board may have a conflict of interest in hearing the case, please address the board now prior to any testimony or information being presented. When the board enters into deliberations to decide the case, no further testimony may be presented. The board will render one of the following three decisions: approve the permit as requested or with additional conditions, continue to request, or deny the request. All parties who plan to testify in this case may come forward and be sworn in. Those who testify must state their name and address at the podium for the benefit of the board's clerk. All material presented must be given to the clerk and will become part of the record. This board can only accept sworn testimony, though hearsay evidence is admitted.
Yes, it's up here.
All right, I think you're good to go now.
We have the clause I to this hearing for CUP 0121. This is a request for a residential storage facility on tax parcel 644104, which is at the 330 block of Pleasant Cove Route. It's for the middle building in the picture right here on our street. So the tax parcel request is a community-owned lot in the Pleasant Cove subdivision, which is an RA zone subdivision off of Houre Road. And taking a look at the requested parcel, there was already a metal shed covering on the parcel. Recently, the owner of the parcel had put a metal building on there for personal storage and storage of a boat. And such use was most appropriately done as a residential storage facility, which is what's being applied for today. So taking a look at the area, we have houses along the lake frontage in the neighborhood, and then along the lots not far from the lake there. A group of jointly owned parcels here that serve as storage for different community members who all have ownership of said lots. So with the residential storage facility, they propose to put one metal building right here adjacent to the existing metal awning. And we can pull up here, the metal buildings, a 960 square foot storage building with a lean to the side for the cover of their boat. And this metal building permitted as a residential storage facility. We typically have been doing these by administrative approvals since tax exempted a few years ago. But this one actually is just slightly over the 3% of the lot size of making approved administratively through a residential storage facility, which required taking into that conditional use permit process, and we're seeing today. So as far as the specific requirements, there's 10 specific requirements for residential storage facility, and this one did meet all 10 of those requirements, and they're listed here. And along with any conditional use, it has to meet the conditional use criteria. And those six criteria are adequate transportation aside assist, the use of a lot significantly detract from a character that's surrounding the area, hazardous safety conditions from that result, the use of a lot generate significant noise, odor, blare, dust, excessive traffic or parking problems from that result, and the use of a lot create a significant visual impact for adjoining properties to pass through miles. And then as far as procedures for the condition requirement, three separate motions have to be adopted for a highest fact. There were exempted five hundred and eighty today. And then any made motion to approve, deny, or take with the request for a 960 square foot residential storage facility on tax parcel 644104. And as far as any questions, with me and the applicants are here today.
All right, any questions for Erin? Now, if the applicant is here, if the applicant would like to speak, then... All right, state your name. Erin, we'll pull that off from here.
I'm George Baucham, I'm Tammy Baucham's husband.
Yeah, nice meeting you. Nice to meet you.
When they get the building out, we just, I figured the company couldn't afford permits before they started. I'm the heating and air myself, and I always pull permits before I install a unit. We didn't know until we hired electricians or whatever, what their permit is, and found out that they did. So that's the whole, can't get our electric to, to...
Want to have questions for Mr. Baucham? Mr. Baucham, I just asked you, you seem to be a nice plot neighbor, but is anybody objecting to this?
No, sir. This is my neighbor, John Barber. One neighbor was concerned about having to pay the extra taxes. I've already talked with him, I'll pay his records.
Okay. Yeah, we worked that out before we even decided to let go, you know, anything on there. Actually, it's a community well, it's owned by everybody, all the way back from, I think, from my house to the road here. And I've been over it for probably 30, well, let's say 30 years, since I moved from my neighbor's place. Yeah, okay. And, you know, before I started messing, it was just a field, briars, weeds, and everything sort of, and then start mowing it down. So I, and then start mowing it down and everything, you got to look at mine. He, I thought he put a nice deal about the shed or the, I don't know, the size is, is mine. Just drive, just put a boot. That's all, that's pretty much all he would do to. But he's got a fishing boat, so a bass, and a fish, and a courtship, experiences they're not.
Do you like the work out video while you're here?
I started off with a sign, but watch, keep this boat clean too. If we discuss it, I put it up in the end, I figure, kind of had a meeting with everybody. There's nothing that I had to object.
Yeah, we had a meeting back in 2000, March of 2018. I told them, I said, you know, everybody that attended, I said, you know, we've got that lot over there. It's not big, you sure, if anybody would like to store a boat or put a shed over there for a boat. I said, feel free to, I mean, I'm only one, I think it's 10 people in our company. If you're skilled enough, I said, feel free to put something over there. And, you know, everybody agreed to that and everything, I think, we got, me and George don't have as much room as they did, so that's why we kind of expanded out over to, but we're the only two, you know, keeping up. And so, anyway, I'm just here on there. Just hopefully they don't make a tear now.
Well, it only took you two years to do it. You knew quicker than government does. So we're pretty depressed. All right, any questions for these nice folks? Is that your wife right there? If you want to say anything?
No, she's nervous.
She's nervous. Can't believe it. All right, if there's no questions, we appreciate it very much. All right, so we'll open the floor and if there's anyone that would like to speak that has an issue with this, this would be a good time to come forward. All right, seeing no one, then we'll just, we've got examples and findings of fact. We have three findings of facts and we'll read these and approve each one of them. And at the end of that, we'll move to approve CUP openings. Open the year, close the year. All right, so Craig, you have findings of fact.
Yeah, I'll make this motion of the development of the properties in accordance to the law. Proposed the district to not purely endanger the public health or safety. Fact, this request implied all eight specific requirements identified in section 21-6010 for residential storage facilities. This proposed structure is subject to compliance of the Housing Building Code standards.
All right, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Make a motion that the development of this property is in accordance with the proposed conditions will not subsequently injure the value of joint or running properties and that the development is a public assessment. In fact, there's no material evidence which presented to suggest this request would injure property's value.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. In a motion that the location and the character of the development is in post-conditions will be in general harmony with the area, which is located in general conformity to all adopted county plans. Fact, the proposed building was made of similar materials above the storage buildings in Pleasant Cove.
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have a motion to approve CUP 01-21.
Submove.
Second.
Judy, it's Jim's, Craig's second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, well, thank you. Thanks for being here with us. All right, Erin's backed up again for a public hearing on Majority Road. Name petition.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. So we received a majority petition at the middle of February here for a unnamed road off of Cooling Road at the 750 block. Since there wasn't a unanimous petition, we have to bring to the board commissioners to be named. And the proposed road name on that petition was Pop Eller Drive. And we just have to have a public hearing for any comments and then approve or deny the road name.
Any understanding from you why this was named this?
I believe it was somebody's grandfather or whatever, they called it Pop Eller. Then, so that's why they went, decided to go with that name.
Think you want to move against saying it was the same? Nope. Only thing worse would be if it was Grandma. And we certainly were dependent on it. All right, so we'll go ahead and open the floor. Public hearing, is there anyone that would like to talk about Pop?
I'll give you a few words.
Yeah, come on up, yeah, sure. What's, and what's your name?
My name's Jamie Eller.
Oh, good.
And my brother, my great-grandfather.
Good boy.
Yes, my great-grandfather.
Excellent.
It's my dad like you.
Hey, is, are you an, you're an Eller as well?
Yes.
Good.
My brother's his grandfather. So Pop was born in 1888 and he...
Jim, did you know Pop?
I did.
No, you didn't bring him. Greg said you played basketball with him.
No, I was five years younger than he was.
You knew we weren't getting through this whole day without bringing this up, dude. All right, go ahead, Mr. Ellers.
Pop was a supervisor about a quarter of four years. And he lived at the very end of coming from town. And he lived his whole life there. And my dad lived there for 16 years. So it's just kind of in honor of him. My dad's got a lot.
Well, we obviously didn't know and we wish we had.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
He was, I was five years old when he died.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Well, it's our honor to have you come forward and tell us a little bit about your great-grandfather or your grandfather. So thank you for sharing.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone else? All right, then we'll close the hearing. Commissioners, we have a motion to name this road Pop Eller Drive.
Second.
Craig and...
Second.
Second. Anything else? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, guys. All right, item number six, Shane. Public hearing for PDS 01-14 is an amendment for surety bond acceptance for Rowan Summit.
Good afternoon. All right, so some of you are on board back then when this project, it may have first came in, I'm not sure. So back in 14, the board approved the PDS Flame Development Subdivision for the shopping center here that you see in the image behind you, which is dicks and hobby lobby and some other uses. But in 2019, I know that the board will recall that one change that the applicant requested, which was to eliminate this access road here for future phase two. This was due, this is going to be industrial, commercial, connecting back to Ridgey Road. But within that modification, they also had made a change where these three parcels were changed into two. So coming back two years later, the developer has a petition here for a change going to, a little bit different, but that lot is now proposed to be split. So it does match in terms of lot numbers, what was originally presented in terms of total. But this area you see in red is a proposed sit-down restaurant. Staff had plans for, we also looked at the covenant compliance with county staff. And so that is probably going to be underway very soon, breaking ground. Permits will be momentarily after that in terms of construction, but grading work first. So this will be the proposed new lot and the reason we're here tonight. This is the only change, splitting that further. This is the overall PDS, which obviously is very busy, but what we're going to focus on is this upper left-hand corner. Zooming in, you see the sit-down restaurant plans here. This is the proposed lot line. This would be lot six in the phase two, or form of phase two here with that access road. Take a look at this section here, we'll talk about shortly. Primarily with respect to subdivision, the primary thing you focus on is infrastructure and those improvements, which this is where the bond comes into play. So on lot six, the developer has proposed a sort of concept idea. What could you get on the six inch of an acre block? Just for, probably be helpful for the board to see. It's hard to see on here, this is a 4,000 square foot retail building. There's no plans for this now. This is only just to show you what may work. And we'll, so look at this and we'll talk a little bit more about what the SRC had in terms of recommendations for the board here. So within that area we were looking at earlier, this area is needed for, to be approved to access lot six. It currently served by public sewer. It would need a waterline extension and also upgrade of this road. Now, as they're building the restaurant and the infrastructure there, this will already be built, as you can see, to access the parking lot. But it's more of a timing issue. If you want to plat, you need to have an infrastructure put in and certified or post the security, which they have provided here. You have a sealed cost estimate of area engineers. They've been involved in the project since the beginning. It's hard to say too, but all this is under packet too, that you referred to, but you have the optimized breakdown. For what it's worth, even though none of our staff are experts in pricing out these things, we did the best we could, checked the DOT, SRC and what we knew. And this is a revised estimate from the original submittal and feel confident enough and with the history of working with these folks here, feel good about it. We did have a final executed surety bond, has been received by the county attorney for completeness, and provided a thumbs up on that. So if this is approved, of course, with the remote meeting, we do have to have a ratified decision for any of these public hearings, but everything is in hand if the board approves, subject to that wait period. The SRC, Subdivision Review Committee, which is just local staff, including DOT, the waterline, the access rate to lot six is, of course, what the cost estimate will take care of. Point two, and the developer is aware of this, that should there, there would either be full access around that building on lot six, which if you looked at the plan, it was pretty tight. So most likely there would be the option to spray one of them. That was the two options provided by the fire marshal. SRC did provide unanimous recommendation along with the planning board. And with this, we, it is public hearings, we'll need to open up for any comment. But there would be a needed motion for approval, denied, tabling, or also approved with conditions for the PDS amendment and also acceptance of the surety bond. And I believe then there may be on the call if there's any questions of the applicant.
Will you say that again, two conditions? Are these the two?
Yes, or number one, more or less is addressed by the notion we have the bond. So point two is something we can share within the group.
All right, questions for Shane. All right, if there aren't any, then we will floor for a public hearing. If anyone would like to talk about this, of course, you see up there, lot five, just announced last week, Texas Roadhouse is going in there, that's great. Do we get to throw peanuts on the floor there? Remember, Texas Roadhouse allows that. Did we do that as a, as a condition that we could sling peanuts? Sure. It is. If your health department's here, can we get a ruling on that? All right, if there's no one who can speak about that, then do we have a motion to approve PDS 01-14 along with the two conditions, one of them being the surety. Two conditions that Shane shared with us. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we have a motion to accept the surety bond.
Second.
Craig, motion, Judy, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Shane, is that it? Good, okay. All right, Shane's backed up for SNIA issue 01-21 for Carrie Brown. Thank you.
All right, so we have this one and one after, that both are in the same watershed, watershed two for Call Creek. Ms. Brown is on the Zoom call, should there be questions for her. This information is in your packet, and it's going to talk over the site plan. I think the board is pretty familiar with those type of applications. We have the breakdown on the staff calculations, bottom of page one and top of two. But this is a RA zone parcel that Carrie and Carrie Brown own. They're eventually going to build a home here, but right now they live on a neighboring tract owned by cabins mud. That's their primary residence. So either way, with this site or when they move here, it will qualify as what we call a real home occupation. Being that you only have 12% of purpose coverage, which is not much, it's in this parcel here, 7,788 square feet, that's 12% administrative. So they only need 14,00910, but still about 70% is the option they could give if granted. So they have a small retail business home decor that they want to open up here on 152. And the parking lot driveway and the 1600 square foot building totals that, over that 12%. So if you have questions with Ms. Brown, I think she's on the call. There's other information in the packet, but this is the gist.
The layer with these, we seem to have...
Right, and I think there may have been a question at our last one on page two. I tried to provide a good breakdown of what we have remaining. And if you see third, going from the bottom, the total acreage in the watershed is 11,885. You can take out 10% of the watershed and allow 70% coverage. That's obviously 11,888. Then depending on how you look at it, we approved 159, which is .013% of the 10% allowed. Look at the other way, it'd be 11,100% of that is your, the total you can provide of that 11,888 can be approved at 2.4%.
Shane, okay, so I see the berm and that's supposed to slow down the water as it runs downhill or what's that?
Hello, this is Carrie.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to note, the berm is just to provide some privacy. Right to the left of that is a dairy farm road. The dairy farmer lives a couple acres behind us. So it's just to provide privacy from trucks and all their equipment going back and forth once we live there. So it just has some trees and bushes currently.
Carrie, this is Commissioner Wilson. About your parking lot, are you planning to pave that?
Currently, we have crushed asphalt and we aren't current, we aren't planning on paving it. The only thing we would pave would be the first 20 feet of the driveway from 152 per NC DOT.
DOT requires the first 50 feet, I believe, prepaid and then there'd be payment required for handicap parking.
Yes, and that would be the only two places we would pave. Everything else would just be crushed asphalt. Yes, and that would be the only two places we would pave, everything else would just be crushed asphalt.
Yeah, that crushed asphalt, that's interesting. I guess I'm used to crushed rock, but. So basically, everything that is not required to be paved will be. And they'll be able to be permissed versus not, correct?
Yes.
We treat them the same, given our, it's technically a obvious difference, but per the code, they're the same.
Shane, so we've got crushed asphalt in the driveway of our lot, does it just pat down and become solid again?
I've seen some of it.
Commissioner Wilson, that particular product is what's salvaged when it dries and grows up and regains. And they sell a lot of them out of Miami, again, here's what I know about it. It tends not to wash twice with ash, because you gravel it, it's on elevation, but it still remains impervious. It doesn't, it doesn't go back to being asphalt.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for Shane? All right, so we don't need a public comment or a public hearing. We would just need to approve denied table SNIA 01-21, we have a motion to approve. Second, Mike, second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, Shane, you're back up. Another one from Matt Eric.
Mr. Eric has a parcel in Moores Motorsports, he's interested in purchasing from Tam Brewer trustee. And his name on our site here. It's a good sized tract, there's not very many left. And it does have a unique feature, it's labeled here as creek, but it's definitely has some flow from time to time. It's not a green extreme and we've checked with DQ, I think it is subject to the core crossing. It's, they're going to handle all that at that level, but from a watershed standpoint, it is the same as the previous site in terms of 12%, 70% request here. And it proposes two 12,000 square foot buildings, and right now their label is personal storage. But I think that Mr. Eric likes some flexibility in the future, maybe if he wants to come back to staff and make a change and work with building inspections, and we talked about that even with environmental health. So right now it's personal storage. And you see the parking lot here, which will be more for later and its use. But it will still be once, if a pretty weather board, once constructed, then staff will verify the placement. I believe this is phase one, this structure may be later on, that's clear. But it should cover everything, but again, same watershed as the one previous. And most average structure out there with a handful have received these allocations. It was slated in 88, so from 88 to 94, there might be some that did not have to go through that. Any questions?
Yeah, so this is going to be once again, a non-permeable parking lot in the future?
Correct, that's the law.
Is the owner on, or is he? Cause here's my thing, you're in different priority, is it called the primary watershed or just watershed?
Two classification.
My concern is that we try to keep as much of the property being permeable, so you don't have extra runoff. Because whenever you put a non-permeable surface somewhere, even, even the top of your building will have runoff. And trying to keep that, out of that watershed, away from the creek especially, I would hope that you would consider doing that, is that something you can do?
Yeah, that's.
So Mr. Chairman, would you have to put that in the motion? Well, we'll arrange for a motion like that, have it please.
Any other questions for Shane or for the other? All right, then we have a motion to approve this SNIA request with the condition, your condition being?
That both of the parking lots need permeable materials.
That's, that's a formal motion, we have a second. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? We're gonna, Ed, I need to get, we might be here a while on this next one, if you don't mind. For environmental health folks, unless they brought dinner for us. Could we, we have y'all do, do your thing, we kind of know the direction you're heading, we make this quick. We did want to welcome Alyssa Harris to us today, it's a new face in the room, not a new face to us. Well, at least from here, a new face. Alyssa's been named as the interim director for the health department, voted on by the board of health a couple weeks ago. So we want to wish you all the best, and we want, thank you. We're getting thrown into something as monumental as a lifetime or generational event like COVID, so. I don't know anyone who's been thrown in, well, maybe you get thrown in. Everything happening with health, yeah, right now, so thank you. You have our support and health calls need anything. Call Eric, don't call him. Adrian, welcome back.
Mr. Chairman, before Adrian gets started, on item number nine, which is what Ed had come up with, after having some discussions with Commissioner Cassidy and myself, we'd like to table this until our first meeting in April of 2010. We got the information so late, so much to cover, I hadn't had a chance to get it over and see exactly what we're going to end up. The solar energy systems, so I've requested to take it to April 5th, which is the day that the new tour will expire.
Well, can we have him go through his presentation? I'd be in favor of that, let Ed present so that we can ask him questions and then at the end of that, we can table. Yeah, is that okay?
Sure, yeah, I just need time to get to it all, I said much about it.
All right, Adrian. Good evening, thank you, Commissioner, sorry, Ed. All right, so this, the date of this two week span falls between February the 8th and February the 19th. As you see in our inspections, we had 23 well inspections completed, 26 requested and one waiting at that time. 92 sole side byes is completed, 29 requested and 39 waiting. 11 IPs were completed, 29 waiting or requested and 39 waiting. I would like to say that we experienced a lot of rain and it has delayed us significantly. We just cannot get out there, I myself was out looking at backhoe soil pits last week in the beautiful weather and water was bleeding in the pit with me, and that was Wednesday. So even a few days of 60 degree weather is not going to change that unfortunately. So you see our existing septic system, we had eight, we had one, we have one waiting at that.
Do you control, are you controlling that? Can you have an arrow available to you where you can tell us, yeah, where you can?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that'll help us follow along.
I apologize so much.
Sorry.
Existing septic system, the space is completed, eight, we had one inspection waiting. Nitrite, nitrate sampling, 13 samples were taken, one waiting. And pesticide samples, applications, applications for zero. Hold down for the next one, additional inspector requirements, so it was February the 8th through 19th. File septic inspections, those weeks 13, well grouse, nine. Complaints visited, 20, complaints waiting, zeros. We did utilize that timeframe of not being able to do proper soil evaluations to address complaints. Individual applications from individual clients throughout counties, 22 in builders were seven and three weeks and three days as of this reporting.
So you were about two and a half weeks, two weeks ago, but rain is pushing it back again?
Yeah, we were actually two weeks, one day right here. So it's as of today, I counted it on today, we're actually four weeks and four days. It's just creating that impact, as we can't get out and address the applications. Folks, you use your time as a, as someone who wants to go places, you can't do anything outside, you come in and fly for those things. Also, so we're continuously getting applications, we can't actually address them. I anticipate some of that, it feels like some of the spring boom is starting a little early. But with, I wasn't anticipating this weather, an inch plus rain every few days, it's, it's really carrying a lot of issues right now. So we'll look at the number of sites that this is made. This is a long list. So get into the timeframe of the 8th through the 19th. See inspector one made 24, inspector two 35, inspector three 23, inspector four 42, and inspector five three. Table, I'm just going to read that, I'll scroll back and forth from top to bottom. So as we look to the column to the right, that's actually the number of permits issued each day, it's gone here, 8th to 19th. 21 total, 24, 18, 14 and two. Number of sole side evaluations, far right on the left-hand column, number of sole side evaluations each day. So this is part of the two pages here, from the 8th to 19th, 10, 25 total, 16 and 28 and three. And hours, these are hours worked per inspector, actually starting the 7th through the 20th. Food and lodging inspection report, completed inspections, 58% completed, need 2.893. Inspection today starting July 43, 44. I would like to say that we have been doing some interviewing for food logic and we have hired someone. So we have, we've got, she, there will begin the 15th. So that will hopefully help us get to some iron, iron stations, I'm excited about that.
Eric, or Adrian, I'm sorry. Okay, so we've got the completed inspections at 355. How many total establishments do we need to inspect each year?
The total required inspections, 16, 67s, so that includes everything.
Was this, does that include?
Virtually in. It includes with the category ones, two, three, four, you know, they have the category one, you gotta expect them once a year, two, twice a year, three, three times, so that is included. If, if you had inspectors to complete inspections, that includes all inspections that are required.
All right, and then that's the differentiation for this one.
Yeah.
The total actual business versus.
Okay. I do not know that off the top of my head, but I can get it for you if you want, absolutely.
Okay, can you tell us when the rain will stop?
I'm afraid June, June, I really don't know, but I need it to stop.
If April showers are coming, by the way.
I'm concerned, if we have not hit the April, for the shower is part of this yet, I'm concerned.
There's lakes swollen, so are the wells.
Yeah, everything is swollen right now, including my yard, and I think everybody else's.
Yeah, I bought this big old rain angels last year and a couple of weeks ago for one week, it was five inches.
Yeah, it was impressive of the.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Anything from you? All right, thank you all for being here.
I just want to say thank you for all the hard work you guys have done. It wasn't for the rain, we probably thought about these. Are we going to keep having this every meeting or?
Yeah, that's, that's something that we were going to talk about, and if we do it publicly or just talk. What we've been talking internally about, maybe we don't need to see you in two weeks. We appreciate you coming up here, but so perhaps starting at our, we, we don't really need to see you in a meeting. So maybe the first, the first meeting of each month, until we just get really tired of each other, you're probably tired of us all. But that, that way you don't have to come at six, you know, after work. So we'll, if the board's okay with that, we'll just go down to the first meeting in a month.
Mr. Chairman, I'm okay, we just have it in the board. Because I mean, we can all read, I don't need Adrian Seifert to read it. And then if we have any concerns, we can address our interim director and the emperor, let him come to the next meeting and explain. Knock it out, like he does a great job, I think he does, but I understand he was wasting his time. He didn't stand up to read the report, can be emailed to us. Just like you said, another four weeks behind us, well, really they're not, because the builders aren't going to be able to get on site and do anything, and this soil dries up anyway. So you're probably right back to the two week period that they sent it. And from the builders that I've talked to here, here just the past few weeks, that's as quick as they know somebody to come out because they've got to get everything ready. When they come out to do the inspection to, so that they don't have to come back and re-inspect. If we've gotten that close, I think we'd probably turn the corner on this thing and just remind us of that they're still doing that same job, I think really all I need to make sure is getting done properly.
I would be okay with that, I would like to see perhaps a little different way of recording all those numbers, but I'm trying to talk.
I, I think our priority, and I think Adrian would agree, is the number of permits, number of inspections and what's the backlog. We've got those numbers, it's pretty easy to discern where we are in the scheme of things. And like I said, it's really not fair for him to put on a report he's four weeks out because of this weather. Because there's nobody, how you're getting back for a septic inspection, there's nobody digging any, there's, there's nobody doing any of these things until it dries up, so. So they've got time to.
Jim, you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay, I did have a question for Adrian. Are we using any subcontractors now or are all of those complete?
Those are complete, we have not used these subcontractors since our last stint in January.
So everything's in house now?
Everything's in the house, we're all moving forward with the GPS units, I use it the other, last week actually. Love that thing, love it.
So does everyone have one?
Yes, everyone has one, everyone's transitioning, I already had experience with the GPS units, not specifically that unit, but a different version of it, and as soon as I got into it, I just backed it on. So I got a very good understanding of it. But, uh, yeah, they're really, really impressive pieces of machinery. Thank you, yes.
So you're, so thank you. We'll, we'll get with you on timing, just, and maybe we could, like Judy said, there's just a few pieces of information we need. Just get on one piece of paper.
That sounds great, and we'll continue to share that information, we'll have more meetings as well each month. So we'll continue to be a record, make sure that, you know, we're doing what we need to do to continue to have as a group members.
Yeah, at some point, you know, once, once you're really genuinely feel like you've got a handle on this, let's get together and kind of talk about the future. See what you guys want to be. Kind of falls into our, our goals as well.
That would be fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, yes.
Good afternoon. These are the zoning text amendments to, kind of zoning boards, as recommended by planning board, relative to solar energy systems and a couple of other uses. So a little background, the county is in the midst of a moratorium, applicable to ground mounted solar energy systems, greater than six thousand square feet. The board initially adopted this moratorium in October of twenty nineteen. It's been extended twice. The current moratorium that we're under would have terminated April fifth, twenty twenty-one, it is not further extended. Just a little background, the ordinance criteria that was adopted in twenty thirteen had two standards. First one was setbacks. All solar collectors had to be fifty feet from adjoining property lines. Even if there were multiple parcels in the project, setbacks must be fifty feet of adjoining property lines. Placement in airport zoning overlay, it did prevent placement in airport zoning overlay. Just stated that if you're within the approach surface, you need to submit an FAA H one. Or obstruction of any question, that's the quote-unquote sixty dash one. In our current zoning districts, you may recall these are allowed as, or considered as a conditional use permit. They're considered or, or may be submitted in five different districts. The RA, rural residential, CBI, neighborhood business and industrial. Since twenty thirteen, twelve sites have been permitted through this process. This is the Roman County zoning map. The green stars indicate the placement of the sites that have been approved. By my count, I think there's also four sites that have been approved in municipalities. Spencer has one, Rockville has one, and Salisbury has two. I mentioned previously that there were five districts that these were able to be submitted for an application. And that's the yellow areas, which is the RA, that's our primary zoning district. CBI, which is red. Industrial, which is purple. Rural residential, which is gray. Neighborhood business, which those sites are so small that they don't show up. Those twelve sites total eight hundred and forty-four acres approximately have been permitted. The average acreage size is seventy point three, this total is over here in the corner. What I would call the system area acres, and what this, these zoning text amendments would refer to as the system area acres, that's the area within the fence perimeter, it's where the, where the panels are going to be located. The system area acres of that eight hundred and forty-three acres that's been permitted, totals about four hundred and forty-six point six acres. That's an average thirty-seven acres, um, per site. The largest site that we have in the county is on NCA eighty-one. That site was a hundred and sixteen acres. The largest system area, I think everybody knows who this is, it's about sixty-four acres. And it's located on Spaceville Boulevard, it's on highway seven, just west of, uh, freight line. That's, that's the biggest system area that we have right now, based on, um, description that we've got. So there's thirty-two pages in PDF that have all those zoning texts. And what I'm gonna attempt to do is summarize that in probably about ten or eleven slides, maybe we can ask some questions, so. It's a very generalized overview, but I think you're gonna get the, the idea of how this process will work. There's two new terms that were created. That's financial surety. It just means it's a guarantee that will ensure completion of the project. The guarantee, there's three manners or methods which can be submitted, this is for directly from the county subdivision boards. Earlier today, we had an application that you considered, I think the Shane had, that considered some type of financial surety, correct? So this is nothing, um, the guarantee can be a performance bond, it can be a letter of credit, or it can be cash. In all cases, let's give it to Roman County. The other few terms, the system area, I mentioned it earlier, it's just a fence perimeter of what would be a modest, unusual or utility scale system. And hopefully to create some sense of, um, how the systems are used, we modified the definition and we created four terms for four, uh, classes of solar systems. First is residential. It's a ground mounted system, six thousand square feet or less. It's used to primarily provide or offset power to a residence on site. Pretty simple, residential, it's associated with a residence, it's an accessory addition to that residence. Non-residential, it's a ground mounted system to provide or offset power to a non-residential operation on site. Can be commercial, industrial, even agricultural. Roof mounted, can't get any simpler than that. It's a matter of roof or wall, a residence, business or accessory structure. Utility scale is everything else. It's one of those systems that's generally or typically tied to an electric grid to generate power for sale or off-site use. Also doesn't qualify as one of these others that we can, we can find here in. So we've got four types of systems, but the name really explains what each of them are. And we're going to, uh, review the standards for each year. A residential solar energy system. As proposed, they would be in accessory use or a special requirement, uh, we have special requirements in all zoning districts. Again, they would be in accessory use, so what are their special requirements? Maximum size is ten percent of the lot size, up to six thousand square feet. So if you've got a twenty thousand square foot lot, half acre lot, the maximum panel size that you could have would be two thousand one hundred and seventy-eight square feet. You've got a forty thousand square foot lot, maximum panel size is four thousand square feet. So when you get to about one point three acres, that's where that maximum, that six thousand square foot maximum comes into play. You've got a two acre lot, the biggest solar panel you can have is six thousand square feet. If you've got a roof mounted system, this doesn't apply. We're not, you know, one maximum there. The setbacks.
Would you say that again? You said, when it's utility, that does not apply?
No, sir. The... Can you ask me a question? I'm not sure what, you, you kind of threw me off because of utility.
I, I couldn't hear you. I, I wondered it, you said that if they're classified as utility, these percentages did not apply?
Right, yes, I, I said it's roof mounted, these do not apply, I'm sorry. The size limitations do not apply to roof mounted systems.
Oh, 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 roof mounted?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay. The setbacks that are listed here are currently in the zoning boards, okay? For accessory uses, if you build a building on your property, these would be the accessory setbacks. So we've adopted them or incorporated them for uses of panel. So if it's zero to four thousand square feet, the setbacks are thirty feet in front, ten feet side and rear. If you're four thousand to six thousand square feet, the setbacks are thirty feet in front and forty foot side and rear. Again, those are the accessory structure standards that are currently in the zoning boards. There's no screening and buffering standard that would be applicable to these units. These are all done administratively. In fact, I looked at the, um, permits in twenty twenty, of course, this incorporates all the municipalities, but eighty-six solar photovoltaic arrays or panels on homes were permitted last year.
Are any of those ground mounted or like roof mounted?
I would tend to think they're mostly roof mounted. Uh, there are a few, but not many. But this process that we're in now is not, is not preventing, that's my hearing. So again, this is residential, in these zoning districts, pretty simple. So non-residential system. These would only be... Get back up. These would be allowed in the RA, the CBI, the institutional and industrial district. And economic development districts. There's special requirements. These will be associated with the business, some type of commercial activities, could be agriculture use as well. There's no amount on panel size, but if the system exceeds six thousand square feet, must be certified by PE that that system does not exceed one neighborhood. And also, it primarily serves to provide or offset power to that non-residential use on site. So really, it's, you don't want it designed to do what's non-residential, but provided on site. The setbacks are fifty feet from adjoining property lines and road rightways, and a hundred feet from any existing residence, church or school. We're not allowing them within the horizontal or conical surface of Big Caroline Regional Park. Fencing that will be required around the system area would be six foot in height, does not need to be opaque. There's no standard for screening or buffering if the panel and an adjoining residence, church or school are separated by distance with two hundred feet. And that is typical, the way our screening standards apply now for anything. Yes, sir.
So the airport zoning overlay? Are there a couple that are in that area?
Yes. We're gonna look at, uh, here in just a second, what that overlay looks like. Like the residential, this process will review and approval is administered, it all happens at four oh two one ninety.
So that's screening and buffering, current standard stipulates that the panel is greater than two hundred feet from the structure on the joint track. So that would mean that if it's less than two hundred feet, it has to be screened.
Roof mounted. Subject to special requirements in all zoning districts and the EV zoning districts. The one special requirement is they can't locate within the horizontal or conical surface. We look at that in our offices as well. This is the airport zoning overlay, this is a very generalized map. Gives you an idea of the extent to which the height limitations are, um, reviewed and permitted in the county. So we're talking about this interior with this thermo circle. That's the horizontal surface, and it extends ten thousand feet of each end of the runway of the airport and swing and parts around the cricks that oval. And the height limitations within that horizontal surface are limited to a hundred and fifty feet above the airport elevation. So nothing can be taller than a hundred and fifty feet above the airport elevation in that ten thousand foot, uh, surface. So we're saying also that we're not going to consider any applications for solar facilities in the horizontal surface. And then the conical surface, which is these series of rings here, but they extend another four thousand feet beyond that. And then increases over twenty once, but for every twenty feet they go out, it increases one foot for height limitation. But we're talking about panels, so, um, non-residential, roof mounted, utility scale, not in those surface areas, and that provides about two point six five miles around the airport. That's proposed. Yet they would be locating in the approach surfaces. The requirement is that they would, they would submit that same obstruction evaluation application to FAA for coming. As I mentioned earlier, our current process is a conditional use process. And you remember that we've only got two criteria. Setbacks, the fifty feet of the joint property lines and the airport zoning overlay. So this conditional use process now would have some additional standards to it. The primary being that it would only be allowed or considered in an industrial zoning category. You remember as well, I said that there now an option in five of our zoning categories as a conditional use permit. Conditional use permits, if you remember, require evidence, they require testimony. A lot of times they bring experts. Now, the only place that we're considering, or we're proposing to consider a utility scale solar energy system is in an industrial zoning district. Reason why is that we feel that our industrially zoned properties should not be utilized for solar energy systems. Industrial zoned properties typically have access, utilities, they're intended for job creation, tax base. Not for passive solar energy generation.
And I'll mention, without getting specific, we've, we've got one case that we did approve in an industrial setting, and now is, um, creating difficulty in adjoining properties that we develop. So just being, being careful about approving solar panels in industrial zones. It's biting us, it's kind of biting us now.
So we have outlawed, quote-unquote, these type of land uses in the industrial district. We, we added some standards and also included a maximum acre size as well. But I'm gonna go through the, with the, the setbacks increased from fifty feet to a hundred feet from property lines. Um, we actually reduced the setbacks from adjoining properties if they're common property lines to twenty-five feet. Setbacks for the equipment are going to be three hundred feet from any existing residence, church or school. That is not the panel. That's going to be the inver. Any buildings or things like that. We had seen at a particular site we visited that, that three hundred feet tended to be that, that limit of where you could hear some of the noise that was associated with an inver. We witnessed that firsthand. Airport zoning overlay, again, horizontal conical surface is not allowed. The maximum system area, again, that's the fenced area where the panels are contained. That panel, that system area cannot exceed fifty acres in an industrial district as a conditional use permit.
Can we talk? So this, so someone can buy a thousand acres as long as the system area was fifty acres? Well, what would you think about changing that to, what's the other? What's the other definition? System area and?
Well, the system area is the only real terminology you can use. The other would just be track size.
Well, but you've defined two different areas. There's a system area, which is the area that's being used inside fence. Then what's the other area that you'd call? It's on your You know what I'm talking about? I'm talking about the planning board. There's, there's the, the, the large area is defined as something. The system area is specifically talking about the area inside, the larger area that's used. But go, go, go back to that slide that shows the total amount of the system area used that we have. It's overall acreage.
It's not a fancy term, but I don't think it's So the, we use this as maybe as a means of ending. The currently zoned industrial properties that you see on this map on a purpose. If an application came in for a three hundred acre site that's zoned industrial, the maximum system area that they could utilize would be fifty acres. So they would do one of two things. They would either have fifty acres to be used for hour generation. And then the other acres they'd use for something industrially related.
I would run your question.
Okay. I, I think what I would say is that the likelihood that that would
Reality is not about a thousand acres, but like
And then they would have to get it resold to industrial as well. And they would hopefully know during this process that they like to move. We're going to talk, talk about land use recommendations as a secondary component of this. And that's, it's really discouraged. I mean, we're, we're not telling them or turning them down at the staff level, but just trying to coach them through it. So this is not the best use of this property. So but here again, there's the opportunity to apply. And I think that's important is that we have not eliminated their option to do so. There's, there's two different processes. We've got a conditional use process. And we've got the conditional district process, which we're going to talk about a little bit later. So the maximum system area is fifty acres. Screening and buffering is only applicable if the system area is within three hundred feet of a residence, church, or school. And it's only applicable along that segment of the system area. So if there's no residence, church, or school around the other perimeter, the only thing they do is put a security fence, a six inch power fence, jangle fence.
Is there any definition of what that screening needs to be?
It doesn't. We're going to look at that a little bit later. Good question. Panels should be constructed in anti-reflective coating. The standard that's in the text says that the applicant will provide us, the manufacturers, material, their sheet that tells us what, what that panel is to satisfy our requirement. Because I just, it's been made to fit on the slide. Supplementary materials. Anything that has been submitted to the utilities commission as part of their application, including confirmation from the utility provider, the thing up, they're going to propose to connect. And then any kind of certificate they get from utilities commission. I will say this, there is no requirement that they apply to the utilities commission before they come to Roanoke County. We've seen it done both ways. I spoke with one of their staff members last week about this at length. And there doesn't appear to be a rhyme or reason. They can do it however they want. But as applicable, if they have this information and they receive their certificate of public need or destruction, we don't want to get any ancillary information that they provide. The utilities commission doesn't preempt local zoning. In fact, a lot of times it's conditioned on the fact that they comply with local zoning. So if they have this information, we definitely want to be aware of it. The decommissioning plan has been talked about. There's been a lot of interest in it. We're going to talk specifically about that a little bit later. There'd be a requirement for emergency access plan that will be reviewed and submitted to the emergency services director, fire marshal, and that fire department manager's decision.
Can we go back to the certificate from NCUC? Is there anything that's keeping us from requiring that certificate before we embark on our process? I mean, it may be that NCUC says, well, we're not going to provide a certificate until you've got you know, the zoning completed.
So you're asking, can we require them to, to do that before they come to us? I don't know the answer to that question.
Can we jot that down as a question? So either blow a hole in it and say, now it doesn't make sense. Here's why.
Well, I guess the good, the better question would be, why hasn't application been denied by the utilities commission? Because my impression is that, that most of the ones that get submitted get approved. And so if you're asking for something that's just a, just another sort of winged process that they're working through to get your boxes checked on them and they show up in our process, I think there's now maybe speaking out of turn, but, but there may be the assumption that that's one of the significant criteria that they have that, that secures their, that, that makes their application suitable in the eyes of the county. And I don't think that's what you're saying. I think what you're saying, what I would be asking is that we're really interested in these other agencies that have reviewed your application. Because when they, they submit an application to utilities commission, it goes through an environmental clearinghouse. And so there's, there's twelve, fourteen, fifteen different agencies, I believe, that review these in comment. You get Fish and Wildlife, you get historic properties. There's, there's just a host of people that review this. And so those comments come back. And I think that's what I would be interested in seeing. That would be something that, that the county attorney now will probably need to talk a little bit more about and explore. But we'll be glad to do that.
Yeah, on the restrictive size of fifty acres. So many of these have, have a lot of different contracts to leasing land or buying land, just depending on the situation. Do we have, is there another another way of restricting fifty percent? I mean, a fifty acre owner and somebody leasing ten different tracks at fifty acres and then uploading the energy from those ten different tracks onto one power pole or, I know they don't do it by a power pole, but one source there and getting around what we're trying to do here with leasing land as opposed to owning fifty acres.
Yeah, that, that's a good question. And I think we may get into that a little bit later when we talk about the the land use recommendations. I, I would tend to say though, from, from a conditional use perspective, that's not as likely to occur simply because of the the nature of industrial zoning and the lack of it being prevailing out in county. I think that might be more something that could occur in a RA setting. But, you know, to be quite frank, their, their applications, if they use multiple parcels that are not contiguous, they're all going to be part of the same application, I believe, just, just because of their proximity and the way things work or they're susceptible to us and what we would see for where their connections are, that type of thing. But we can look at that as well. And I think, I hope, I'd like to think that we, we addressed that a little bit later on too. So if you would just, if I don't touch on that a little bit later, just remind me of the commissioner's agreement. Did we get it before? Conditional district zoning. The options here are for the RA, the CBI only. Their criteria would be very similar to that we've seen before. Hundred foot from the property lines, they have the ability to reduce the setbacks. Equipment setbacks are bringing a big from residence, church, or school. The A Z G, I think everyone's familiar with, you're comfortable with. Screening and buffering, again, that standard would only be applicable within three hundred feet of those properties. The panels also anti-reflective. You've got a requirement for access roads. You have to be constructed six inches A B C, aggregate base course that gave an interest paid connection to state road applicable. You've got to have a decommissioning plan. The planning board added this at the last meeting, the supplementary material requirement. You see here, the recommended maximum size limit is fifty acres. And that's something we're going to talk about in the land use plan recommendations. And this is a legislative process. And what does that mean? That means it goes to the planning board first. It's courtesy hearing. Then it comes to the board commissioners who are above here. And as a staff, we like to think that the conditional district rezoning process creates equity in process for consideration. It allows for also for negotiation of conditions between the board and applicant. Perhaps even the citizen has a concern can be addressed, some more fluid process. But it also eliminates that fact time mission where you have an engineer, attorney, praiser, telling you about the project. In their professional opinion, their qualified terms, which cannot be disputed by the property or the community or by the commission. So this creates a level playing field. And again, it, it lengthens the process. And this will use permit standpoint, if you're the joint property owner, you get a letter and it generally will tell you, hey, in fourteen days, the Roanoke County Board of Commissioners are going to have a hearing on an asphalt plant right next door to your house. Oh, my gosh. What does that mean? What can I do? You can't, it's very difficult to hire an attorney, get someone to represent your interests and know all of your concerns in two week period and be ready for that hearing. So what we've done now is that process goes from twelve, fourteen days to probably more like forty-five days, maybe longer. You go to the planning board, the planning board provides a recommendation. Comes to the board commissioners. That's generally two months for a loan. So that's what conditional district zoning process does. That opportunity is only available in the RA and CBI district. You've taken out the RR, you've taken out the industrial, and you've taken out the neighborhood business. There's only two districts. And table uses where you can do a conditional district for utility scale solar energy system. Yes, Mike?
Could you just back a second? I'm not sure I caught all of that. So conditional district rezoning proposed from conditional district in liberal agricultural and commercial businesses and industrial districts. So all of those would be okay to put solar or am I reading that right?
So the RA district is this yellow district. The CBI is the red district. The only place using this current zoning, the only place where someone could come in with an application for a utility scale solar energy system would be yellow or in the red. That's what that text said. Those are the only two places they could be considered. Okay? But then you've got these seven grade standards. Big standards.
Yeah. Oh. One of my concerns is the amount of agricultural land that could be consumed by these farms.
And we're going to talk about that. Hold, hold that thought.
Okay.
That's, and so you, you're thinking ahead. And your, your thinking is in line with what the planning
Before Jim Green.
Well, the recommend, recommended maximum size limit is fifty acres. But that's going to be a recommendation that's containing range guidance that accompanies this. If you want it to be a standard in zoning works, land use material is only a recommendation. So keep that in mind. And that's relative to what you're, you're talking about. And that's relative to what you're, you're talking about. Again, this process, I sort of hammered this home. The process for this is legislative, which means it's planning board and board commissioners. Okay? Let's talk a little bit about the decommissioning requirements. We had high hopes that DEQ would help us out with a statewide standard. And they provided a, a report that was very well written. It was very detailed, but it kind of let me down. It didn't, didn't provide any real suggestions.
Well-written, dear John Carter, huh?
Yeah, yeah. 72 pages worth. But what it did, what it did say is that where these have been permitted throughout the state, the counties or municipal seats have been doing a good job of it. Here we are, we don't have it. But about half of the counties that have the decommissioning plan also have financial element tied to it. And so what we did is if we looked at the two instances that the county's zoning laws requires bonding for land uses. And we really took that land use and we just incorporated it into the text that we've got here. And that's, that's what you see here is that the plan, you have a cost estimate prepared by P E. Detailing how the system will be removed and the system area will be reasonably restored to its original condition in the event that it is not under the center for a 360 day continuous basis. So assuming that the, the application gets approved, they're going to provide Rowan County County financial surety at one and a half tons of cost estimate amount. That definition, you accept three different kinds of sureties. They use the middle of bonds. This is a text that's in our original label, have impact uses, being by the decimates and reflecting changes in labor costs, English practices, et cetera.
Okay, I've got a final question here. Okay. When we first started in the definition, financial surety talked about a bond. There's like three different kinds.
Sure.
The one I'm the most concerned about is this letter or credit by a financial institution. So suppose that the institution goes ahead and says, oh, this is great. And you know, we're going to back them up. And 20 years from now, that institution is gone. And the owner of the system has taken a walk too. Who's going to be responsible then? Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of. So I mean, is there a way ahead that we can take that part out and require the bond or the cash in escrow?
Hey Judy, uh, I, I would have to check with a banker. But typically in years past, what's happened when you get a letter of credit, they do put money in escrow and hold it until that letter of credit is dissolved by the people that you are, are declaring that, that, that you won't, you, you have this money to take care of the obligation. So before we take it out, I think we need to talk with somebody that's more qualified than I am. But a letter of credit has always been a very strong way of, of having monies to take care of items. And like I said, when I was involved more than I am nowadays with banks, that's what they did a lot of the time, was to take that money and, and hold it what, in what you and I would call an escrow account.
Yes, Commissioner Fuzman, then it's, it's, so the money's actually set aside in a specific account.
So by, by the financial-
Yeah, so, so the money is, is, is set aside on a specific account and the county's the beneficiary of that account. And nothing can happen to that account without notice of us. So the money can be spent without notice of us. They can't transfer the account or bank can't close without-
And, and the kids, uh, bankruptcy?
Who, who's bankruptcy?
You know.
Yeah, the money doesn't, I mean, yes, we, we, it's our money.
Okay.
And hopefully we can, and hopefully we can release it. And, and in those situations, you would, you would expect that that account would be transferred to another institution. But if, if the original depositor filed bankruptcy, then that money's structured specifically for our folks.
Okay, as long as it's-
And I'm sure we would have to find out.
Just make another note, we don't need to talk a lot about it, just something for us to consider of this. Uh, let's see. System will be removed and system area reasonably restored in its original condition, then it's not going to produce energy for 360 day continuous basis. So, you know, none of us here have ever worked in solar energy field. I'd just like to make a note about that. And could gainsmanship happen? You know, they, if they've got a 50 acre site or it's one of those, it's 100 acre site. But the definition of not producing energy for 360 day continuous basis, that they could have one panel still in, in service and, and skirt our definition here. Or maybe not. A lot of these we're just thinking about and-
And, and I think maybe the way to address that is tie it to the, um, the megawatts that it was designed to produce, you know, within 25% or something like that. Because I think there's probably a, um, it, it, it's not as efficient over the duration of its, of its lifespan. And so if, if it was 10 megawatts when it was installed year one, they actually gave eight and a half or six and a half, um, 20 years. I mean, is that, that's kind of what you're saying is, I'm not, I'm not saying what you're saying.
It's not just that. You know, we're certainly not here to- we're, we're certainly not here to, um, to insult any folks who would be involved in the solar farm business. But we also have a duty where whether it's three years, five years, or 25 years down the road, that citizens of Rowan County don't say, well, what were y'all thinking? What were those guys thinking? And the fact is, I, I believe I, I have read that a lot of these solar farms change hands a lot after they're installed. They, they're investments, they're sold off to other investors. And so not having a whole lot of experience in that, we don't know what this looks like in 20 years or 25 years or in 30 years. We don't know that the owner of these sites 30 years from now are 12 LLCs removed from who we did business with initially. And so while we may stand face to face with a solar farm principal a month from now after we pass this and with all good intentions and good faith, we do a handshake deal with these folks. 30 years from now, it could be, like I said, 10 LLCs removed and we don't know who those folks are, what their character is and what the circumstances are that they, so, so I can see absolutely that games could be played. Uh, we, we received information about the cost of remediating these sites, decommissioning is being expensive. So some, again, someone down the road could say, well, I'm going to leave one solar panel hooked up and generating. And then I'm not decommissioning this because their standard says that they have to produce energy at least sometime during a 360 day period. So we're not going to spend the $10 million to recoup, replant, restore. We're going to play a game. So I think that's what we're getting at.
Um, I'd like to follow up on the chairman's statement there. What, what is meant by reasonably restored to its original condition? Because, you know, we've had probably like one of the last 100 years, you know, you've got contracts that say, oh, you know, we're going to put it back where it was. Well, it just doesn't happen. And I want to make sure that we've got some teeth in that. You know, it's easy, I think, from the perspective of having it out in the alfalfa field. You know, because your expectation is that you turn it back into an alfalfa field. If someone has had to bring in urban moving machinery and leveling and compacters and all this kind of stuff in an area where we used to have those nice forested, you know, forests there. I've got questions about that one.
That, that's, that is a reasonable question. And I would tell you that as a board commissioners, you have the ability to make that decision. That plan is presented to you as a board. This is what we as developer slash applicant intend to do. This is how we're going to meet your requirements. That would be a great question to ask them. How do you reasonably restore a wooded tract to what it was before? Isn't it reasonable to assume that they want to go back and put seedlings in? Or do you want to go back and put that standard trees that was there before? But that is a decision.
Or the legislative process that-
That is a decision, this will-
You know, talking to them, I mean, I got a lot of these questions and Ed said, you know, we, we could make this 1,000 pages long. Or when it comes to forums, we can fight those things out on an individual basis. It's like he said earlier, it keeps, it, it makes each one, um, we deal, we deal with it at the time and we're not just checking boxes with the applicant. And they say, seeing we've met all the intent and there are more implications, so.
And I would say in our land use material, we're going to talk about here in a second, but that we really acknowledge the fact that no two sites are the same. And what may be a concern at one point, the county won't get, give me a second guess. And another point, these are the generalized standards that will apply across the board. To give the application and get it into a process to, to, to have a fair process. Not tell them we don't want, but to tell them if you're going to make an application, this is how our process works. And these are the minimum standards that we've got. And as you can process it, it will be evaluated. So moving forward with decommissioning element, um, this was a segue into what Commissioner Ed said earlier about what if, what if there's just one panel in operation? If the system owner needs to request an extension of that 360 day period, they can do so in the same manner which the approval was granted with a conditional use permit. With the legislative conditional district is only requested to be kind of a hearing in either case. And I'll, I'll be honest with you, this, I probably shouldn't say this this way, but I don't want to go through a decommissioning exercise. I would not want to have to call in Jay and whoever else would be needed to execute the bond. I mean, that would be one of the worst things that I think we'd have to do. It would be a nightmare to have to administer that. Especially if it's on someone else's property. It's not the, the solar utility system, that LLC group, what if it's farmer loans? It's going to be tough. So I look at these things at the standpoint that once they're there, I hope they continue. I'm not looking for them to be gone in 20 or 25 years. They need to replace those panels, they can keep getting them.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, can we not put some type of language in here that would address something in the existing solar farm? Because, you know, we hear all the time about how the new panels are going to be much more efficient. And, you know, sooner or later, you can reach a point where it's cheaper to replace and even to commission panels than it is to continue to operate with the old panels. And I think we need to have something in the ordinance that, uh, address that issue too as far as longevity of the new panels. Would that be considered a decommissioning? What, you know, just what are we going to do there?
Yeah, and I, I really don't know how we would do that. I think, um, based on the 360 day window that they got, if they came to us and they said, we, we need time, we're not, we're going to be down for a, a year and a half because we've got new panels coming in, we want to re-outfit the, the facility. I think we would, we would definitely be in favor of that. But we've got a process to consider. But I guess from, from the equity standpoint, I, I don't know that we require any other facility to continually update their equipment. And I, I don't, I, I really don't know how. And, and quite frankly, it's, it's the 360 day period of not producing energy is going to be something we almost rely on a man or the utility provider to tell us. We all know. So just, but, but we will look at that, Commissioner Pierce. Okay, hopefully this will be a little bit easier. When we first started off, I said this was a solo text and some miscellaneous text amendments. We had proposed some other changes for some similar land uses that in terms of their scale or their size, that, that seemingly could be moved from the conditional use permit process into the conditional district zoning for RA districts. It's going to be the dumps, garbage, landfills, LCIDs, junkyards in the RA district as well as zoos. We're, we're talking about moving all of them from conditional use permit process in the RA district to just being a conditional district in the, uh, in RA. Again, that's that legislative process that comes to the planning board, it comes to the board commissioners. So along with the other texts, we've got those that's left in the ledger. Commissioner Pierce asked about this earlier, what's the screening standard? This would be the standard that applies alone, that segment of the system area. If a residence church or school is within 300 feet of a facility. It's going to be robed trees, mix of deciduous nevergreens, 40% shall be large matured trees. All species shall be 24 or 6 feet tall at the time of planting. And combination with the moped fence or the mufflering below the lawn or lower on the evergreen shrubs creates vision separation. They're going to submit a design for review and we're requiring that it be installed by a cert five member of the landscape contractor licensing board. Again, that's only in the area where it's adjoining a residence church or school within 300 feet.
That's initially for subdivision- That's initially if a subdivision decides to be built six years later in force.
It's whoever gets there first. But I will say this. Conditional district zoning is fairly flexible. Standards can be modified. Things can occur, it's an negotiating process. I may be putting all my eggs in that basket, but I do believe that that process will allow things to be modified as it moves forward. And so we've got this as a standard. It's the minimum, they can do more. This is what the minimum standard is. Screening only applicable if there's a developed parcel adjacent to it, is one way to think about it. If there's not anything around it, it's a chain link fence the whole way. No screening, no opaque nature of fence, nothing. RA, CBI. I will tell you this again. I look at the land use recommendations here, and I think there's some things there that, you know, as, as a policy guidance, as an applicant, they would see what what their, their product or project should look like. All right, so that's all the zoning text. Are there any other questions before we get into the next phase? Okay.
Do we need to do anything?
Not yet. So this is a map that Shane produced. It incorporates or creates a composite of the east land use plan, the west land use plan, and the south high and five corridor plan. And so those of you that have planning experience, remember that we've got area one, two, and three, and then we've got some Florida recommendations and things like that that show up. We've got a reasoning application or a conditional use permit application. We try to reference the things that are contained in those plans and how they relate to any policies we've got. And Shane's also provided, um, solar energy facility locations as well. And out here the wow seven is within the, uh, within the highway seventy corridor. So just kind of think about that as an example, as we move forward. And I mentioned this a couple of times, but these recommendations are intended as a guide or guidance document to supplement the zoning standards that we talked about previously. They would be an amendment to each of the land use plan. And I would submit to you that each, these three paragraphs here outline purpose, intent, and process for using these recommendations. And so I'll just briefly read these because I think it may give you some context what we're going to be talking about. We mentioned we're in a moratorium, but I would say due to the recent advent of solar energy systems as a significant presence in its landscape, the county has taken steps to update the zoning ordinance. With standards designed to encourage the use of solar for supplementing residential and commercial power generation, along with minimum criteria to ensure utility scale systems are not dominant land use feature in rural areas. And we, we created four different types of systems. I do supplement residential and supplement commercial. We talked about our minimum standards for conditional districts and conditional use. Just on this earlier, the county recognizes that site characteristics of the utility scale system will differ based on a variety of factors. And it's established following policies for guidance when selecting a location and for consideration by the planning board or board commissioners when evaluating an application. This is important, this is this will be those, those qualitative things that you will think about or will be brought to your attention when you're evaluating an application. No single not preferred policy hearing should be viewed as the de facto criteria for denying an application. Rather, the policy standard may be mitigated through conditional district negotiations, for example. Setbacks like number three. However, multiple not preferred or discouraged policies strongly suggest the orderly planned use of land resources, principal panel in Arizona ordinance has not been satisfied. And that's kind of a delicate way of saying it's not an order. It should be denied. Okay? Let's look at these. The general recommendations, these would apply countywide. Shows you that composite map, east, west, south corridor. These would be the policies that apply countywide. Anything served by water sewer is not a preferred location. Talk about industrial zone tracks. A lot of times, this board has invested county money to extend utilities for economic development. In my mind, that's not so of itself. Okay, we're saying that. Areas currently served by water sewer are not preferred locations, okay? We talked about this from a zoning standpoint in the text for conditional use permits. Existing industrial and economic development zoning districts, even those sites that are listed with EDC are not preferred locations. We encourage these in areas of low to moderate residential population densities in combination with buffers and screening. It's a general, general thought. Locations or areas of a site with topography such that screening or visual separation cannot be achieved from joint properties or roadways within a three-year timeframe should be avoided. Doesn't mean you have to get it on the whole site, it's just those sites that are going to stick out like a sore thumb after three or four years, but they'll never be able to do it. We think as staff, the, the primary concern from, from a lot of folks is the visual aspect. As a conclusion, sites that will occupy prime solos or displace active farming operations are not preferred. But if the farmer or landlord wants their site to be a solar facility, and this board approves it, they should incorporate native plants or grasses as ground cover and include pollinator from vegetation. That would respect them their plans. You won't see that. Okay? Continuing on with general recommendations. Don't locate in special flood hazard areas. Should be forgiven, but we're also encouraging them not to, uh, or discouraging from, from front footed fill in those areas as well to place panels. Should be given here sites that have identified poor soils, receptive constraints, or generally encourage rezervation.
Could, um, I'd like us to think about the word encouraged. You know, Roman County is one of those as we talked about water sewer needs and the new change. We voted multiple times to vote in water sewer in the county decades ago. So, I mean, it's really expensive. It may be that we get water sewer in areas of poor solar.
Yeah, and I think what we can do is either tie this one to that, that notion of, uh, the the reasonable expectation that they'd be serviced by, by utility either there or that first one where it's areas currently served. But yeah, that's a good one, I think, I, I think that needs to be brought up because it could certainly make some of those areas leave, um, going with the science. Thanks for the presentation, Paul Park. Dan Nagelus, similar. National Registered Properties, Roman County Landowners, not preferred. Then Commissioner Pierce was asking, excuse me, Commissioner Green, they had been asking about something related to this next full item, utility scale solar energy systems located within one mile of another utility scale solar energy system is discouraged. This latter one was added by the planning board at the last meeting, the maximum system acres of fifty acres is preferred. And this would apply to the conditional district zoning. It may be increased based on the site's ability to meet all other recommendations contained here. It's sort of a guiding principle. Could be increased. I mean, any of these could be added to or deleted for sure. Specific to those areas west of eighty-five. Need a residential basements in proximity to municipal, this area too is not a preferred location. That's that area. In green. Based on existing infrastructure. Like transportation, water, and rail access location within twenty-nine and seventy corridor overlay are discouraged. Location that minimizes the visual impacts that sink by the quarter are preferred. East of eighty-five. Site locations along twenty-nine and eighty-five are discouraged. Here along east one fifty-two or US fifty-two are not preferred. Giving a nod to sites in proximity to High Rock Lake or, or frowned upon, should say, they're not preferred. That's this orange area here. And then in the eighty-five south corridor, we have some identified targeted grid nodes that are referenced in that plan as figure twenty-three. Those are discouraged. So the planning board did provide a statement of consistency. The preamble to it there is, is pretty characteristic of all the set forms of statement, but, but the rationale is that it allows conditional district zoning. Some cases supplement our materials. Allows for solar energy growth a lot better categorized in the system sizes and uses and encourages minimal most appropriate land uses. The utility scale are only going to be considered in RA and CBI. Industrial conditional use permit. It provides reasonable standards for screening setbacks and buffering to minimize negative impacts on adjacent properties. Also requires financial responsibility for the owners who are operators, excuse me, and decommissioning installed utility scale system. And we're talking about conditional district zoning and what. So that's, that's a lot. Commissioner Pierce probably has the, the most recent experience of being on the planning board and he knows when this stuff comes and it's in a big packet like that, there's a lot to digest.
So at this one, we were setting our public hearing for fifteenth, right?
Well, that was, that was the request. Certainly, the board has the option to do a number of different things, one of which is to schedule a public hearing. You can refer back to the planning board. If you, if you elect to refer back to the planning board, I think that creates a a very acute window of opportunity to follow the authority deadline, but yeah.
I think we're, I think, I don't know, I mean, I feel like we're in good shape, just giving us time to hear from you. Maybe he's familiar with it, and it'll give us a couple of weeks to, to trudge back through this. We can go ahead and vote to set the public hearing. And then we may be in the mood to vote for fifteen. Being after that's a fifth, which is when the we're touring, touring.
So certainly, if you, if you conducted the public hearing on fifteenth, there's no requirement that you adopt it that night, you know, to you could delay your decision. But the one thing I would tell you is that you, you, you have the ability to make some pretty good changes if you want to, but I would, I would just caution, if you make some real substantial changes, it, it probably isn't a bad kind of label. But if it's just things that we kind of talk about here, about clarifying or adding, you know, requiring here, there, I don't think that's
Could you be ready? I don't, I don't know what your part in that public hearing would be, fifteen. But could you be ready to kind of revisit those things that we talked about?
Yeah, yeah, that's our problem. We have, um.
Have you presented?
Yeah, they, they'll, they'll probably look a lot like this.
Yeah, I have a question. So going back to the financial stuff and between who is going to determine what amount will be required for the cost of decommission?
So the, as part of their application, I think I've had the ability to turn to the, the attachment in your, in your material.
We're going to be in here.
It's on, it's on page eighty of the, the ZTA oh-two nineteen planning board recommended version.
April, we have something.
You see it by the page?
Yeah, it's on page eighty. Well, while you're
Forget that.
What I would tell you as part of their application, the applicant shall provide a plan that includes a cost estimate prepared by an NC professional engineer having professional credentials, recognized expertise, or specialization in construction and removal of similar facilities, detailing how a solar energy system will be removed and the system area will be reasonably restored to its original condition in the event it does not produce energy during a sixty day continuous period. So the, the PE who's got some experience with these type of facilities and removal or demolition or something like that, is going to provide a cost estimate. And if that cost estimate is a hundred thousand dollars, well, let's say it's a million dollars. Our ordinance says prior to permitting, the applicant shall provide Roman County Financial Security at one point two five times the cost estimate amount. Assuming that next that you roll over the process before they get their permit, they will provide us us irrevocable letter of credit, cash, or surety bond, or two-five million dollars.
One point two-five times the cost of the decommission.
Yeah, well, if the decommission is a million dollars, it gives about.
The only concern is, Ed, if, if solar farms are twenty years, there's no way we can reject what the cost is going to be twenty years. I mean, twenty-five percent sounds like a lot, but if it's not growing during that twenty years, that ain't gonna be enough.
Well, the other thing too is that there may be things in the manufacturing of the current solar panels that right now, it's a DQ, so it's great, fine, wonderful, go ahead, but twenty or thirty years from now, they're like, whoa, you know, and it's gonna, it's kind of like ground fields and all the old gas stations, and everybody just kind of let the gas overflow, because we didn't know any better.
I think Commissioner Pierce, I, I think the one point two-five comes from the standard we already use for streets and subdivisions, and it's, it's no, no real science behind it, just an estimate of future costs, and collective enough today that we have to go in and work to finish the project. And there's no, no science behind it, that far out, to determine exactly how much it's
Yeah, we, we look, well, as part of planning, we, we looked at a couple counties that do require financial assurance, and I think two of them allow for a salvage value as part of that, that makes the track it out of the decommission cost, but I believe the top accounting gave them ten years that that, that surety was, was good for, and then every five years thereafter, they had to submit an updated, an updated amount.
Yeah, that'd make me a lot more comfortable, because we don't know what each place is going to do, we don't know what cost material is going to do, and we need to have something that keeps it up to date. I mean, I won't be on this board, but there'll be some industry sure to have to deal with that. No, I won't do that. You know, the, the other thing, I mean, we just don't know what we don't know. It was perfectly fine, I think this is the right statement, it's okay, and we've got the Duke Energy Co-op saying they were operating fourteen, right? And so now, thirty years later, forty, fifty years later, whatever, the effects change. Things, things change, so that's a good idea.
Just, just looking at the general consensus, you'd like that sort of ten-year window, and then.
With an update here around here. Because they can take the action, and once they get a list of what all they have to do, all they have to do is update, should take a week.
My other question about this whole cost estimate thing, a fun, is, I mean, unless they find an engineer that's kind of low-balling.
You put us in a hurry, Steve.
Well, I know, that's one master. Are, do we, are we anywhere in here, do we have some way to say, okay, you know, we seem to really, really love solar energy, oh, or somebody looking at it, or?
We, we can do that. I think we've got through a couple of different avenues. Consultants that do that, or, or would have an opinion as to the satisfactory nature of that, I think we would, as part of our new deal, just someone who would just have an interview, and then we can send it to, I know we've got one that, that we typically use for projects, but we've got a couple others that are helping us for both of these, we can send that too. So you can take a look at this, and, you know, it'd be a nominal fee that we pay out, but I think it, it kind of does, it'd make you feel better, make me feel better. How's that?
And last, last questions for Jay, which I'm, I think I know the answer to this, but as I stated earlier, these things tend to change hands a lot, so these requirements, including financial responsibility and moving back some.
Yeah, because again, the way to go prove that these conditions generally attached to the land, and they, they sort of flow with the land, whatever comes to undraft that. So yes, they need to, I guess before we leave, just with all the, for public hearing, if, if Ed's okay with doing it on fifteen, it'd probably be good to schedule that and go ahead and get that part done, and then if you need to just defer your conversation and final vote, first maybe enable, that, that's a lot better than the way you have the hearing enabled, and then you may have somebody show up. So it'd be good to get those comments in, close the public hearing, and then take it up, make it shorter time.
Yeah, I got two more questions for you. Do you have any, any, um, comments on fifty-eight?
I can give you that answer here in just a second. Eight, eight plus. And that's total acreage size, that's not a system area.
Other question. What's the actual, what are the actual tax rate? It's a little bit, the actual.
Percentage of state.
There, there are two different rates, one's an improvement rate that we would just charge locally, but if it's considered to be a utility, like we have one application that's considered, the question of whether it's a utility, if it's a utility, considered a utility, not a state, and the state sets that rate about it. That's sort of like Duke Energy, Roman County, Southern County has a facility, those, those facilities are assessed for value based on the rate set by the state, they just pay us what the state says. But these are other improvements, I think, we just tax it all over the place, based on value that we assess.
I have one follow-up. So if the solar company is leasing the land from a farm or who knows, is it not the landowner that gets taxed and everything, or is there some way to buy that out?
There are two different ways to do it, and, and a lot of that depends on the agreement with the owner, but we do have items that are assessed at least of improvement values, by the builder or owner of the equipment, separate part from the land, and that, you know, now we're getting into an area of present use, if you're taking over more than acres and present use right now, I think I can probably pull it out of present use to convert it to a solar, at least that acreage in solar production.
I have just one item for clarity, back to Commissioner Pierce's question about decommissioning value reestablishing, do you want to give any consideration to a salvage value in that estimate?
I think that should be in their proposal to us, because they'll have more realistic number about the salvage value than, than we would.
Okay, just wanted to try to get it in there, and I mean, it's probably easier to put in and then take out later than to go to the other way.
Is, when you're saying this salvage value, you're saying we subtract from the amount of basically, with the salvage, we need money to clean it up, and we'll sell it up to somebody to get money.
Like, I think what we were talking about is, because I've been in share with these storms, and I want to see what they're looking like. The panels are recyclable, and most of the framework that holds the panels, up there is aluminum or stainless steel, so there's no maintenance. And I think that's what I'm talking, and just taking that out of the ground, not for us to establish, but for their salvage, where they're decommissioned, and they're going to turn right back around and sell that product off, and, and what we're saying is, if there's two hundred fifty thousand dollar real estate products sitting out there, you know, if we have a way to lower our exposure in case they walk away, and, and that's what I'm saying, if we're going to update it every five years, this gives them the benefit of what that's, you know, was worth it that for, but that would be the end.
Yeah, but if they just walk away from it.
Then we got down to our gratitude, like here, I think we subtract salvage, so.
They walk away from it.
Well, we would, we would, we would enjoy the benefit of that sale of that interior, yeah.
I, I would, I'd rather not include the salvage, because we've also got tremendous expense that we don't know what that's going to be, it's true.
Yeah, administration level could, could be interesting, but yeah, we can, we can look, I, I think the Catalina Farm, right, is a pretty good example of how, how that would work, and you can make that decision.
Just following the taxation question, NC State says, I think, the property tax that, that we would enjoy would only be twenty percent of value, so eighty percent of it. I could be wrong. It just gave an example, if a solar farm is installed, costs a fifteen million, twenty percent is subject profit taxation, under General Statute one oh-five, two seven, there's only three million subject profit tax, so I would guess ten percent, but according to this, it's one percent. So on a thirty million dollar project, we could pull ten percent, remain, or something.
You have anything about that, Julie? No, you're not the tax guy either.
All right, so can, can we make a motion, sort of, sort of, public hearing from fifteen? Would that be appropriate?
Thank you.
All right, hey, Ed, all of us would, I'm sure, agree, this has been a long project, and so for Shane and Ed, Aaron, thank you, all of us here at the last meeting, thank you. I'll, I'll shoot a note to Pete Vogel, nervous, and labor intense.
A lot of hand teams.
Yeah, and you guys are just so smart on all this, and I confess to you, today on the phone that I don't understand all of it, so thank you for being patient with our questions, some of them, maybe not good questions. Those are all my questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Jay, item number, roughly, yeah, Jay, a little update on our.
I'm glad you're far now. Here, now, we're going to kind of tag team, and update for you guys, and prepare a memo that you circulated to the board, that gives a pretty good timeline of what occurred since the meeting two weeks ago, the update. Basically, we've had three departments conduct site inspections. Caleb's code enforcement, Mark Benfield issued a citation for trash that they collected in the, in the carport, and that kicks in, I think, a fourteen day compliance period to clean up some, some trash, not sure the scope of that, we, we'd have to find out from, from Benfield, but. Animal control, while it doesn't look good, it does meet the minimum standards for house and dogs, and other animals that are there. Adrian Brewett and I, and Aaron, and Bob Lindgrass had a cycle this Thursday after the meeting, and Adrian and I spent the next week sort of reviewing health, health code regulations that might apply, but we saw what I've determined is, is that the regular, the practice of regularly feeding animal parts in a densely populated residential area is called governance, and so as of today, we've issued a notice of violation under the health code, that's one thirty-eight, dash nineteen, also under one fifty-three A, one forty. We've given him an administrative hearing Friday, a week from this Friday, to come in. I've asked Caleb to go ahead and order another vulture effigy, and we have one.
Explain what that is.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a dead vulture that, that is made out of real vulture feathers. The one that we have, that we use as a landfill, is currently in use as a property that has both the problems, and it's not caused by anything that's happened on that property, but we're trying to move some vultures there. And so Caleb's going to order another one, take two to three weeks to get it in, Bob Lindgrass is going to know, personally serve the current notice of violation with an offer to use the effigy to move the vultures out of the area. Bob is hoping that, just based on their behavior patterns, that if you stop the feeding and practice to move the bones that are out there and then use the effigy, there's probably our best chance to move the birds. My impression when we were out there was that the yard is muddy and the animals are out there, and the trash in the carport, and there are appearance issues, but it was the presence of the vultures that were starting, you pull around the corner, and as Aaron says in his memo, there are twelve or fourteen vultures roaming around the front yard, and it's, it's, it's a bit startling, and, and, and so we concluded in our notice of violation that we expect him, as part of the order to abate the issue, to immediately cease and desist outdoor feeding of animal parts, and to cooperate with animal control and methods to disperse the birds. And so Bob has had some communication with the occupant, he's not the owner, so we're hoping that, that he can have some offers go out and catch him when he's coming and talks about it. Maybe give him the notice of violation and tell him we have to, that'll be two or three weeks to get that in, you know, from the state. But I think you had to organize all the different departments to go take a look, and they've come back, we've had two notices issued, that will follow up over the next couple of weeks.
No, I mean, Jay, Jay's done most of the work, and the directors have, the only thing I would say is this is going to take time. Take it, take it. Tom.
So it's a, it's a, it's actually a dead vulture, or is it just a stuffed vulture, and they just lay it out in the front yard to scare off the other vultures? Well, I explained to me that there's two types of vultures in this area.
Well, I already explained it to me, that there's two types of vultures in this area, the vultures that are currently on that program, are kind of migrating there, this becomes a feeding area, but the other vultures that, that he's willing to put out with the effigy will run the other birds off. So, so, but none of this is going to happen if this guy continues to feed, what are you going to do? And that's my concern, is, you know, we'll get it all cleaned up, and the need is, then, can I, I hope there'll be another beer company out there to feed my dogs. Then we're right back to square one, and we're right back to going through all this, look at the cost of the county, our county manager, our county attorney, county animal control director, speaking from environmental, I mean, look at the cost, all the cost, we don't have someone that prevents him from being cited, cited for, be hit down in a body park, I mean, I just, I just don't get this, I mean, we could stop all this right now, next time he does it, you know, we could, we're going to take the dog, we'll be done with him. But my concern is, like Aaron said, it's going to take time just to get you back to square one, what happens if this happens again, then how long are we going to fix the work back, how long before a child gets hurt, some of these animals out there, if you see it like Aaron just said, I mean, it's, it's nasty, and that's been a lot.
And I'm sure it's struggling to the negative, and I'm glad that we're looking into it, because when, when we start to look at the 2018, you know, pictometry and the areas, you don't see any of this in the 2018 areas. And so this is evidently an issue that's just appeared in the last, you know, I'd say the last year or two of the notice.
Started back at San Francisco.
And so it's even shorter than that, and you can see that this was just, everything was more on 2018, and, and the conditions are, I mean, I, I certainly wouldn't have the side looks there. It's, it's, so anyway, we'll at least feed him immediately with the notice, and then we'll work with him to disperse the birds, and like Mr. Pierce says, if he does, we'll put it in, we anticipate there's going to be some cat and mouse with some of these.
So, whatever went out today, give some 14 days to clean.
That, that notice went out last week, and that's on the cleanup, that notice went out last week, and that was 14 days, and then they're going to re-inspect our notice, our notice for the health, public health nuisance violation, sets an administrative hearing for Friday, assuming three days to deliver, 10 days for hearing, so we schedule it for Friday week, so that March 12. So Friday, March 12, 10:00 a.m., it says administrative hearing for the health nuisance violation.
The solid waste was issued on February 19th, and there's 14 days from that date.
Jay, what happens if this guy comes in here?
Then they're going to abate the standard, he does have 30 days to appeal after that, by statute, so technically, you're looking at, you have another 30 days.
If we had a statute in place, would we still have to go through all this?
It, it, it depends on the statute, but typically, with any enforcement mechanism, there's going to be a timeline of issuing the notice of violation, administrative hearing, actual, or on the property enforcement, it just depends on the type of authority that you use. There's some, you just don't exactly how long this is.
Any action for now, what we need to do?
I don't think so, I think, I think, Aaron, I think the best method to keep everybody impressed with what's happening is just provide an update as things happen, just because we know the interest is there.
Have the homeowners been notified about what we're doing?
The, the governor's the owner, or the president?
The complaints. Neighbors, yeah.
I have not heard a thought.
I'm down with Aaron's one.
We have, we can.
Would you like to?
I would love to, I would love to, but.
So when we get together next time, it could be 15th, I think, then we're going to, we will invent some timelines and some thresholds, one will be Benfield's citation.
Yeah, that, 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 that would come to pass, I guess, the fifth or the sixth, but then that, that would trigger something else, if there's not complaints.
Could you guys create some type of communication with the neighbors? Whether it's an email, or.
It will be, yeah, I'm going to do that.
I'll tell you.
Your son too.
I'll tell you, I'm going to start, there will be other commissioners who will conflict and call me. Well, you know, we assured we'd be doing something, I thought maybe they'd be here tonight to see what you did, but I told them not to. So, we'll see, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, Bob, Bob is with us, you might have asked him if he has had any communication. Bob, have you had any communication since the 19th, I mean, 15th?
No, sir, I have not had any communication with him since, actually, the 19th, I was out there, 7:30 that morning with Caleb, myself, and Officer Benfield, I spoke to him briefly then, but Officer Benfield actually presented his citation, and we did not really have anything to cite, we just, I just introduced myself and spoke to him, but I haven't spoke to him since.
I'm sorry, I meant the complaints that staff spoke to 15.
The neighbors.
No, I have, I, I have not had any communication with them, no, sir.
Hey, we know you're not so busy, could you, could you reach out to those folks? And let them know.
Yes, I know, I can give you two names, and he'll call us.
Yeah, I'd be glad to, I mean, it's, it's, it's what we do, and, and, and for the most part, it's about communicating, but we're trying to do an accomplished, and Caleb, Caleb just gave you an update, and actually, US Wildlife has him, they'll provide us with the costs and statistics, and maybe we can have an answer, then we'll talk. And what's that, he says, what's getting in?
We have to have the homeowner's permission to position this.
Well, maybe one of the national neighbors, maybe, you know, if there's any problem, then somebody will ask to help them. But this works well, because we can get Bob's animal control guys to get out and get the notice to them directly, about what they're going to mail, that they can hand deliver, and then they can talk to them about what we're going to do with the effigy, try to get that in before we get a week.
Is it just, is it just laying the yard, is it? You don't know?
Yes, sir.
Bob, can you explain the effigy?
Yes, sir, so the way this works is, is that you hang the effigy upside down in an area that the, is highly visible to vultures that may want to come in, and it's basically a warning to them that this is a very bad place to be.
Number, number one, the other, the other bird would have to stay, if you held him.
Yeah, it just lets them know that bad things may.
By not. Wow. Okay, all right, let's move on. All right, anything from anyone else, thank you, Jay. So, letter report, item number 13, Roy County, 8,990 pounds roadside debris and litter between Monday, February 8th, and Friday, February 19th. It's almost 9,000 pounds, I do appreciate Salisbury Post doing a, what do they call her, Monday, yeah, Ask Us. And there's a, there's a picture here.
That's what Angie's doing.
Man, come on, Roy County, it's, I don't know where this stuff's coming from, is it flying out of the back of trucks, pickup trucks, is it flying out of the back of garbage trucks?
Did you see the trash that's out there at the intersection of 601 Dean Road for a week, or literally, they just threw their trash bags outside the road? I had a truck out, I picked it up.
All right, budget decided 14, motion approved.
Thank you.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
We do have some board appointments, so let's start on these, Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, Sue Weddington applied for reappointment, her term will expire in 2020, at the end of 2023, you have a motion to approve, Sue, to the.
Second.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
For the record, Carolyn, these are two-year reappointments, and they're only allowed to be reappointed, quite, or reappointed once, so that their initial term, and then they can be reappointed a second term, right? And there are circumstances often that we would appoint them beyond that. Yeah, yeah, that was my point, kind of going back to the public speaker that we had, someone saying if they've been serving for 10 years, it's time to move on, and the reality is, we have a, a rule that they can only serve two times, so there, there's a, there would be very little opportunity for someone to serve 10 years, now the, the reality is, because we have such a need for people to join these wards, as I said earlier, we currently have 40 openings, sometimes we have folks who have already been appointed and then reappointed for a second term, that they're, they're not supposed to serve beyond that, but no one else applies, so that person re-appeals for a third term, the county commissioners have the ability to override our rule and reappoint someone for a third, third term, but the, the, the issue of if they're, if they've served for 10 years, they need to move on, isn't, it, it's just not the way it works, and so if we had folks applying more often, we wouldn't have to reappoint anyone for a third term, right? Also, now, also, we have certain wards, reappoint and save, would that be one on state, then with your state ones, other than you, it's like, it's your secret room. Yeah, actually, yeah, the, the bottom line is, we have openings, and this is a great opportunity for us to put a bunch of really good people in here, and then avoid the, the issue of them being reappointed for, for more than, you know, the total of four years, so we're, we're in a great condition to have to do that, send this application.
Yeah, and we need to reach out into the community, because I don't think most people, except for those serving, would even know, number one, that's just family, but number two, how.
Might be a good Monday Ask Us thing, if you want to serve on board, why don't you do that? So, anyway, Home Community Care Blog Grand Advisory Committee, Micah Ennis was recently appointed as Director for the Social Services, the commissioners are asked to appoint Ms. Ennis for the remainder of this year's funding cycle, which ends on June 3rd, and so we have a motion.
Second.
All the papers say aye. Jeremy Jacobs applied to fill a vacant general public seat for Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, motion and a second approval, certainly.
Second.
All the papers, Scotch Irish, I'm going to combine some of these Scotch Irish volunteer fire department, fire commissioners, Jason Boger, Mike Menius, applied for reappointment, and Steve Simpson applied to fill a vacant seat, so motion a second for those three. Second. All the papers say aye. All right, there's two, Therapeutic Recreation Board, there are two vacancies on this board, and two applications have been received, Sheila Sapp, and so let's just look on that for Sheila, motion a second.
Second.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Amanda Greshaw, I'm sorry, Amanda, I'm going to struggle on this, Amanda Greshaw applied for the other vacancy, however, Amanda resides in Iredale County, this is the Roy County Board, we have a rule that requires appointees to reside in Roy County, however, Edward Haley is the therapeutic recreation supervisor, and he sent us a note and noted that Amanda is a recreational therapist, and the therapeutic recreation director at Catawba College's degree program, due to the difficulty, once again, of finding volunteers, Edward requested the board would, that we raise the, that we waive the residency requirement and consider appointing Amanda for a term that would expire in May of 2030, Gresh, do we have a motion to do that?
Thank you.
All the papers say aye. Lastly, Town of Faith, playing board ETJ, Mary Morales applied for reappointment, and so motion a second approval. All the papers say aye. Do we really have a closed session? You're going to make. Jay, do we have a?
Yes, it's, it's, it's favor.
All right, so then let me say, I'm moved that the board entered a closed session of the courts with North Carolina General Statute 143, 181181, to continue approval, consider approval of the minutes of a closed session held on June 15th, 2020, July 13th, July 21st, August 3rd, January 19th, 2021, and North Carolina General Statute 143, 3181183, for attorney-client privilege, communication, discuss insurance, risk liability, cost sharing with the state for help, sanitary, so, all the papers, send the room, get started. Looks like we're back on, so we have a motion to adjourn.